Public hearing, relative to a current dilapidated or dangerous building or other structure located at 17 South Street, Portland, Massachusetts. And after hearing, may make record in an order of judging it to be a nuisance to the neighborhood, R Dangerous and prescribed to its disposition, alteration, or regulation. All is authorized by Mass. General law, Chapter 139, Section 1.
Okay. Now, so open the public hearing for all those wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in? Come on, please. Calvin Anderson, 12 Comfort Street. As a member of Lynn Historical Commission, every time one of these comes up, we try to get out and take a look at the property. Three of our five current members would buy this one, and we have no problems with this being torn down. Comments were forlorn, too bad, it's been too long. This is at the end of Dead End Street. The other streets, houses on the street have curb appeal. People have flowers and plantings, et cetera. This is very, had rented by the railroad track that hopefully is going to be a rail trail in the future. But this is a forlorn property. Other members have said it's scary. I'd hate to live next to it. So we concur. This one can go. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, members of the city council. I'm here on behalf of the owner, 17 South Street Court LLC. Project manager Todd Pollard with me here today. We acknowledge it's been a little bit of a long time here for this thing.
Is it in favor?
In favor. No, well, I'm in support of, on behalf of the owner, whatever project plan is here. So we're just...
Yeah, so you're not in favor of tearing it down?
No, I'm not in favor.
Okay, so you gotta wait till the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody else here wishing to speak in favor? Hearing no one else wishing to speak in favor, the public hearing for those in favor is now closed. Anybody here in opposition?
Thank you. So basically, we're in the process of renewing the building permit application to tear it down, then build a new structure on the property. Plan is to demolish, build a three-bed, one-and-a-half-bath colonial. We're just waiting for the utility companies to sign off on the, that the utilities have been terminated. Finance is in place. This project could be completed by...
Late spring?
If all goes well with respect to the building department. But the finance is in place, we're ready to go. We do apologize for the delay, but it's our intent to demolish the building and put a new structure up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else here wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, the meeting is now closed for opposition. What's the wish of actually councillor Capone?
Yes. Could I have the owner, or yourself, whoever's representing the owner, come back up? I'm sorry, I don't really... So we gave permission a few years ago to have the property demolished and then restored. There was gonna be, we actually gave permission for a new house to be built.
Right.
And, you know, I know we went through a lengthy process to remove a lot of the stuff that was in the yard. Corridors living there. I mean, the place was really, really bad. And it's a constant source of complaints from the neighbors there. If I knew for sure that you guys are really gonna do this, I mean, I don't have a problem rescinding this or tabling it probably, you know? But I would like to know that you were really gonna follow through, you know, with doing it.
Well, the issue was with some finance. The finance anomaly is in place, and the money's ready to go. So it's just a matter of now. And I do have, for instance, the National Grid application to get the utility shut off. So that's the last piece of the building permit we're looking for. So we're just looking to renew the permit, and we were just looking at plans online as to what kind of house they're gonna put up with the property. So if I, what I'd ask is maybe to table it for six months, and we could probably complete the project by then.
I'd like to table it for a month, just to know that you followed through, or the National Grid is contacted. I will help you get a hold of them if you're waiting for them to get back to you, or if there's a problem.
I don't think there's a problem with National Grid. They were pretty close with it.
So, and I'd like to meet you guys, you know, maybe next week, next Tuesday night, if you're in my county council, look at the plans and do that. I wasn't working here. I don't want to...
We appreciate it.
...have an empty watch there. We were wanting to do this a couple of years ago, you know? And I was very glad, the neighbors were really glad that their house was gonna be torn down and there was gonna be a new house there. But it hasn't happened, you know? So I'd like to be able to meet you guys, look at it, you know, talk about the schedule for when things would happen, you know? To make sure we go from one step to the next to try and get this done. You know, like you say, in the spring, that would be great. So maybe we can schedule more like that.
Maybe we can set, where we can brief by some plans, we can show you what we have in mind, and tell you where we're at with respect to the building permit process.
I'd like to table, make a motion to table this.
Second by councillor Clucci. Go call.
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes councillor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes councillor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes councillor Clucci?
Yes.
Yes councillor Seh?
Yes.
Yes councillor LaHia?
Yes.
Yes councillor Lozey?
Absent councillor Net?
Absent councillor Trahn?
Yes.
Yes councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, nine yes. Next door is public hearing relative to annoyance amending in portion of the zoning map of the city of Lynn, the in-zone annoyance of the city of Lynn. And I have the approval of the public planning board with an amendment as follows. The areas affected by this zoning amendment shall include all areas delineated on the map presently available for viewing of the city of Lynn Inspection Services Department. Generally, the area shall include Camden Street, Bay Street, River Street Place, River Street Heat Court, River Street Court, Canal Street, Cooper Street, Needham Slender Road, Mudgeon Street, Avon Street, Wright Street, Radon Street, Reed Street, Dearborn Terrace, and Dearborn Avenue. All areas presently zoned as an apartment house class II R4 district described above and delineated on the zoning map shall not be designated as general residence R2 district.
Okay. The public hearing is now open for anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing for opposition is now closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor? Anybody here wishing to speak in favor? Anybody here wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Mr. Wisher, councillor.
Yes. So what we're trying to do here is reduce density in a very congested area of the city where there's proposals to build over 100 units in a very small area where there's no parking. The traffic is very, is very bad as it is, and we want changes from an R4 to an R2 to reduce the density in this particular area. We had a discussion with the planning board, a lot of neighbors came. Most were in support. The planning board was in support, and I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Second.
Councillor, is that with the recommendations of the planning board?
Yes.
Go call.
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes councillor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes councillor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes councillor Clucci?
Yes.
Yes councillor Seh?
Yes.
Yes councillor LaHia?
Yes.
Yes councillor Lozey?
Yes.
Absent councillor Trahn?
Yes.
Yes councillor Walsh? Absent. Petition is Century Bank file signs for commission for assigned permit into State Street.
Okay, the public hearing is now open for those in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Paul Martin. I'm with Barlow Signs. We recently submitted a new drawing. I'm not sure if there's anything yet, but originally we had just a standard form. We tried to do something, but that puts the elements of the surrounding areas into the sign. The client has intentions of working with the city of Lynn and using this as a public service announcement sign. That's one of the reasons why we're asking for a 25-foot overall, that could be seen from a train platform. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Want you to sit closer. We'll have to hear. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Matt Manion. I'm the manager of the Century Bank branch. Just to echo what Paul said, we would like to have a sign 20 feet height so it would be visible from the street as well as from the railroad, from the train tracks. And, you know, we would be willing to partner with the city to use it to display public service and community investment.
Great, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing for those in favor is now closed. Anybody like to speak in opposition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Jeffrey, please. Public hearing here, Jeffrey. Anybody here in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing for those, opposition is closed. Councillor Chakoudas?
Yes. I've spoken with the owner, and they have the actual sign going around. It's the sign, the only way you can really tell is the one that is the same height as the building. Councillor Chakoudas has worked on this quite a bit herself. I think the sign is good. It's gonna be on Market Street. This is the Century Bank, it's on the corner. There's no sign there. This will be on the Market Street side, and the sign is the same height of the building. So I like the sign. It's councillor Chakoudas work on this too. And we spoke to the owner, and I'd like to make a motion to grant this particular sign.
Second by councillor Clucci. Go call.
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes councillor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes councillor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes councillor Clucci?
Yes.
Yes councillor Seh?
Yes.
Yes councillor LaHia?
Yes.
Yes councillor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes councillor Net?
Yes.
Absent councillor Trahn?
Yes.
Yes councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Next petition, petition of A&amp;J Autobiography Two for a change of use, autograph here at 860 Western Avenue.
Okay, public hearing is now open for anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in favor?
[inaudible] So you say your name for the record.
My name is Abday Boybikel-Hedge. I'm talking about, they have me brother. He's leasing his place. He used to be a mechanic in Chelsea, and he leased the space right now in this place in Lynn. Basically, it looked like to me, I see, it's, it used to be, it used to be an auto repair before, like, two years, three years ago.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing for those in favor is now closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition?
Paul Kreswick. I live in 14 Murphy Avenue.
Can you please speak into the microphone, please?
My name's Paul Kreswick. I live at 14 Murphy Avenue. I'm the owner of the premises. And this premises is located directly behind the repair shop in Eric's building, as it is now presently. And I have some photos in case. The house is located about 22 feet, 23 feet away from the, this building. And what I'm concerned about is that in the past, when it was a repair shop years ago, there was a lot of storage of oil-containing materials, usually old motors, transmissions, you name it. And so I'm afraid that if this becomes a repair shop once again, after a hiatus of several years, that this sort of situation will repeat itself. And of course, because the land that the building is located on is higher than my land, and there's sort of an abutment there holding back the land, that if there is an oil spill, it will come onto my land. So I'm not so much opposed to a repair shop going in there, but with some kind of stipulations that, that there'd be no storage of either hazardous materials, particularly in the back of the building, which you can see there, would affect my property. So that's why I have an opposition. Also, you know, the usual junk cars, parking problems, noise, you know, those are all issues with a repair shop.
Okay, councillor Seh.
I'd like to ask a question. Let me picture you show us. That's the garage.
On the left is the garage.
The brown left, you stop parked in front of it?
The garage is on the left of that photo, and my house is on the right.
So the garage is your garage?
No. Oh, you mean in back? Oh, yes, that's my garage.
Okay.
Down the driveway, yes. Yeah.
And it hasn't been in business at this location?
Well, there's been succession. For years, Jack Lord had a repair shop there, the used car facility. And then it became a detailing place for a short period of time that they went on business, I understand. And that was a kind of a nuisance, because they were washing the cars outside, and the spray was always on the cars and so forth. But at least it was quiet, and they did keep the place neat. And then it became the Academy of Sin, which was a gym, which failed out for a couple of years. And so that's, so essentially, it's been out of the car repair shop business for, I don't know, probably eight or nine years.
That's why they come back for other councils, because it hasn't been...
It hasn't been...
...changed the position for us.
Yes, that's, that's been...
Mr. Place councillor Seh, right next door to Bruno's, the new Bruno restaurant.
Yes, right next to Bruno's.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Is anybody else in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed for those in opposition. Councillor Capone?
Yes, I spoke to the owner. The owner owns a restaurant next door, and he did have the gym there for a couple of years. It was a detailing place for a while, a gym. Didn't work out, and he would like to rent it out to this auto repair place. The property that he does own, he does keep very neat, you know, in places. And I spoke to him. I didn't talk to him about the hazardous materials, but I would, I did tell him that there should be no cars outside, no working on cars outside, no cars parked out on the street.
You're gonna put those as stipulations?
So I wanted to make those stipulations, because I do some projects with Mr. Kreswick, who is right next door. It has been a lot quieter and neater there for the last, you know, seven, eight years. So I kind of have a little faith in the, in the owner of the property, based on the way he kept the gym there and the way he keeps his other properties, including the restaurants. So I would make a motion to grant with the stipulation that there'll be no hazardous chemicals stored in the garage, that there'd be no working on cars out on the, in the parking lot outside. All work to be done on the vehicles will be done inside the garage, and that they would have to follow all terms and conditions of the building department and IST.
Second. Okay. Second by councillor Cahill. Go call.
Councillor Sashin?
Yes, whoops.
Councillor Seh?
Thank you. Yeah, the area, I just have some issues with it. It's not just P, because I always try to support what councillors, but it says, you know, auto repair two, and change in the use, and we have so many car shops in the city that, I mean, it's like being inundated with these shops. It seems, no matter what stipulations we put on the law, especially over, you know, area, beyond the licensing laws, approving the licenses and all of that, I just don't think that's the area or the neighborhood, if you put in auto mechanic shop, especially, there's a reason why it hasn't been open for seven years.
Just let me add.
Councillor Capone?
Yeah, so what I'm trying to do with that, because there's people that are grandpa, you know, especially Bennett Street and Alley Street. It's a lot better than it used to be. We put no parking up and all that. Trying to come up with a few places, and I have a couple, that I can say, this is a model place. This is the way a car repair shop should look like. So we have one on Oakville Street that rents up, Nick Manino, he's a nice deep place there. We got another place in the Lynn lower building that's really nice and neat. So I'm thinking that this is gonna be one of those places, and that would make it easier for us to come down hard on some of these other places that just have cars all over the place, you know? So, you know, if he didn't abide by any of these stipulations, he would lose his license. I mean, we would renew it, you know? So that would be my intention. Because I think long term, we have to address some of these places, you know, on Summer Street, Madison Street, Alley Street, there's so many in Lynn too. But I think what helps us do that is if we can have a few places that we can say, this is what a place should look like, you know? So years ago, if you, if you called up to have your car repaired, they might tell you, well, we're busy, bring it in next week. You know, what's happening now with a lot of these places is they don't turn anyone down. The cars are just flying all the way up and down the street. That's what I'm trying to avoid, and I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is find some responsible owners that I can point to, so when the time comes, we can point to some of these habitual offenders and say, this is what our place is gonna have to look like. And I'm hoping that this could be that type of place, and that's what I'm thinking about, you know, what I think about doing that. Because I do agree with you. I know we agree on most of this stuff, you know? So that's what I'm thinking about.
Councillor Seh, for you.
I can appreciate you definitely, and turning a lot of the back there on this one. I've tried to do the exact same thing, and I've got a place in business right now on Main Road that I was reluctant to allow moving up. Again, the same thing, use Flummards as an example, a couple of places, you know, the way they maintain their property, the way they do their business. And we're in court now, and places in junkyard, and with a guy that uses it, I could come up and turn a panelizer, cars dismantled, uses it as a junk shop. Took us three years to finally shut the guy down, so I mean, I don't know, I just feel as a bad area application.
Could I just... Uh, you would you hand up for us, councillor?
Here, could I just ask the councillor, the proponent, to let us know the hours of operation and the days of the week that they'll be used?
Yeah, if someone did come up from the... Mr. Capone, please tell us your hours of operation, please.
Eight to six.
Monday to Friday is Monday?
Monday to Saturday.
You have seven to five on your application?
Six in the morning, I can't stop before...
No, I think you said eight to six, but so what time is that? Seven in the morning until five at night?
Eight to six.
It's okay, you're gonna start, so you're gonna do six days a week, eight in the morning until six at night? You gotta be closed on Sunday?
Close on Sunday.
Okay. Councillor Capone?
Yeah, so one of the, I agree with a lot of the things that councillor Seh is saying. One of the differences here is, I think, the reputation of the owner is what I, and that's where I beg on a couple of these other places where we've been successful.
Owner of the property?
The owner of the property. The owner of the property, not the tenant, but the owner of the property. A good relationship, good luck with him on the work that we've done so far. So that, that's what I'm hoping. I mean, it may not work, you know, but I'm expecting that it will. It's a small place anyways, you know, and it is kind of chained off, and I, like I said, what we've done in other places, you know, as we've eliminated parking spots, little, like little, you know, trying to, you know, rein some of these other places in, we won't have that problem at this place here, especially with the stipulations. And if they don't abide by the stipulations, you know, he won't have a license.
Councillor Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to also point out a good point from Madam Clerk made, in that we are just allowing the use at this location, and that in fact, the owners would have to go before the licensing commission, licensing committee to get the proper license. So there will be another opportunity for the council to shape the way this, this business operates. So I'm supporting that, and I do concur that, I do know the owner personally, and he's a big, good businessman, and he seems to be prideful of his tenants.
Yeah, councillor Seh can also put on stipulations that he wants on licensing, payment on that list, so.
For the morning.
Yes, write a motion to approve by councillor Capone, second by councillor Clucci?
Stipulations.
What's the...
What's the stipulations?
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes councillor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes councillor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes councillor Clucci?
Yes.
Yes councillor Seh?
Yes.
Yes councillor LaHia?
Yes.
Yes councillor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes councillor Net?
Yes.
Absent councillor Trahn?
Yes.
Yes councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Next petition, petition of Comcast Timothy Broad with permission to intercept existing conduit on South Common Street at Shepherd Street to place new vault manhole from new vault manhole place one large PVC conduit 200 feet plus and minus in an easterly direction to the property of 104 South Common.
Public hearing is now open for those wishing to speak in favor. Mr. Broad?
Good evening, Timothy Broad with Comcast, New B Forbes Road, Woburn, in favor of the petition as this was read.
Okay, have a seat right there. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing for those in favor is closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, public hearing for those opposed is closed. Councillor Capone? You're a busy guy, Tony.
Could I call Mr. Broad, please? Well, what exactly we thought we're doing here?
So we have a cable line already going down Shepherd Street that goes down to South Common and makes a left according to the map. That goes around the corner and feeds another side street. We want to try and pick up 104 South Common Street. They're requesting our service. So instead of trenching all the way down Shepherd Street, we're just gonna intercept that conduit that's already coming down on the South Common, place a manhole over it with a splitter, we'll cut into the conduit and then trench to the right to get to 104.
That's 200 feet?
Yes, for the property.
And we're gonna restore the street to its former condition, right?
Absolutely, whatever the stipulations are on the, on the permit when we get that from the DPDW.
A motion to grant. Second.
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes councillor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes councillor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes councillor Clucci?
Yes.
Yes councillor Seh?
Yes.
Yes councillor LaHia?
Yes.
Yes councillor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes councillor Net?
Yes.
Absent councillor Trahn?
Yes.
Yes councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. And the last petition is a petition of Cell Co. Partnership DBA Horizon Wireless, Daniel Klasnik asks for permission to attach, maintain, and operate small cell communications equipment on existing utility poles within the city of Lynn right of way near the following locations, 99 Essex Street, 92 Franklin Street, Vecdo Way, 235 O'Callaghan Way, 8591 Hammers Street, 68 Sylvia Street, 3 Ward Wall Ave, 68 Western Avenue.
Public hearing is now open for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Yes, good evening. My name is Daniel Klasnik. I'm the attorney representing Horizon Wireless. I have offices at 210 Broadway, Street 204, in Nephil, Massachusetts. I'm here in favor of the, of the petition.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat right there in case anybody has any questions. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing for those in favor is closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed for those in opposition. Councillor? Counselor Lozey?
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to speak to Mr. Klasnik. I, I got a call about 10 years ago regarding the device at 68 Sylvia Street, and it was actually a complaint. And when it was first installed, is this going to be a larger device than the one that's existing, or what, what is happening?
Um, thank you, Counselor. Basically, what Verizon Wireless is proposing to do, these are called small cell installations. They're going to utilize the existing utility poles in the city right away. There'll be a single antenna, and I do have some plans, and I can pass them out for each site if it's helpful. But there will be one single individual cylindrical antenna that will be mounted to the top of the utility pole. It will be, the dimensions of that antenna are approximately 24 inches high and about 15 inches in diameter. In addition to that, there will be-
Where are they off the ground?
Well, each location is a little different, but I, I'm looking at the one on Harbor Street particularly. The, the antenna itself will be 37 feet and 10 inches to the top of the antenna, which will be mounted to the very top of the utility pole.
What about Sylvia Street? 37 feet higher than the pole?
No, no, I apologize. No, the pole itself, this particular instance, is 34 feet, so the antenna is mounted on a bracket directly on top of that, so it's the two feet over that. The one on Sylvia Street is going to be located at a height of 37 feet 11 inches on a 35-foot pole.
Now, I, I guess I'm a bit ignorant on this. I understand we've permitted antenna, cellphone antenna towers and antennas on existing chimneys in, in other locations. Is this something new, a new technology, or is this what's coming to this with cellphone technology?
Well, what all the carriers are facing, Counselor, is just an exponential increase in demand on their network. So what Verizon Wireless is trying to do is really a commitment to the city of Lynn. I think we can all agree that it's very important that you have the ultimate possibility for access for your citizens and businesses to good quality wireless service. I think we're all becoming completely blindline. We're eliminating our landlines. We're wanting to be able to go out and surf the web as we walk down the street or, you know, in our homes. So what Verizon Wireless is continuing to do is deploy what they call macro sites. Those are the ones that you had just described, on buildings, on towers. This is really intended to complement that and really target a particular area where Verizon Wireless has seen a significant growth in its wireless demand, simply that it cannot meet the capacity requirements or coverage requirements. So this is going to complement that. We'll still need those macro sites, but we're going to also need these particular types of locations to meet, as I said, the exponential demand that's being placed on the network. There's only so many calls and so much bandwidth that each site can handle. So in, in this particular instance, I think what Verizon Wireless is trying to do is do something that's fairly low impact in the community by utilizing existing, I'm sorry, existing telephone poles, existing utility poles to deploy these small cell antenna sites. There won't be any disturbance to the ground. There won't be any equipment placed on the ground. Everything is located on the utility poles. Verizon Wireless entered into an agreement with National Grid, and to the extent that joined me on hold with Verizon to, to have permission to do this. And as I'm sure the Council is aware, under both federal and state law, wireless service providers are entitled to nondiscriminatory access to the utility poles for this very purpose. So what we're really trying to do is show a commitment to the city of Lynn to provide you with the best possible wireless service.
Counselor Capano?
Yeah, maybe you already addressed this, and I didn't hear you. Are there any of these in operation? Do you have any of these antennas up in the city anywhere or around, in adjacent areas, you know, Sargus, Swampstead, everywhere else?
The one that, thank you, Counselor.
I just wondered what they look like, not necessarily.
Yeah, I have a photograph actually of a site that was deployed, actually named Gary. This is something that's fairly new for Verizon Wireless, but if it pleases the Council, this is two photographs. An existing utility pole in town named Gary, combined called by, I mean, the mall.
Hear any other questions, Counselor Capano?
These are on utility poles. I, I don't know, I'm not for it or against it, I'd wait to see it. I'd just like to think about it a little bit more, I guess, you know, I knew there's no rush, right?
Counselor Seer, do you have a question? Counselor Capano, you still have?
Yeah, I mean, the last part of what you said of regulations being that you can do this anyways, except, you know, without the City Commission, you need City Commission to do this, am I right?
Or? I'm sorry.
The City Council just need to give perfect rating authority for these type of antenna structures.
Okay, if, if, I don't know what other Councils feel like, you know, maybe I'm just making a big deal about it. I, I'd just like to table it and look at it, look into it.
Counselor Kay? Attorney Lamont, what is the city's standing and or ability to succeed a challenge? Should this be eventually, not tonight, eventually denied as a permit?
An outright denial, I fear, would open the city up to a legal challenge of attorney's fees. The federal law encourages telecommunications facilities, and absent legitimate reasons that are proffered, that I can appear in court and present what, present to a judge, it would be a risk of liability for the city. That being said, if the Council wants to do due diligence and research this and actually drive to H. Barry and take a look, this is, seems to be a new technology, but an outright denial based on the record before this council tonight, I do not believe we could withstand that legal challenge.
Just one more question. Are these subject to, are these taxable products or, are they, are they subject to property tax?
Right, and they are subject to property tax, recent changes in, in the law. I know Verizon is not as often happy with the changes in law, and typically does file a vacance in all communities across the state, but this would be something that Tita Karen says his office would assess a tax upon if it went ahead.
Counselor Seer, any other questions?
Thank you. Couple things. One is that tax state target, well, Verizon right now sends out a bill that charges a full tax of people who have taken the deed from Verizon. They would be fined for seven, as much as $12. Also, depending on, you know, the expense of what it is for their kid, and I also think that Verizon is doing this, which is kind of smart for Verizon, with the way it's saved money, send these on buildings that they've been paying rent on, where we've been given permission in the past to do that. I think it would be maybe in Verizon's best interest if they took that tax law, people of Lynn with the charge, and, you know, kind of help me, and, yeah, maybe I might gain paid for this.
Counselor Seer, maybe you could add a stipulation to it that you want each other?
Well, I'm just saying, I, I, you know, I understand what Verizon is trying to do. Makes as much money as they can, about trying to provide as much service to the city of Lynn. Okay, that's great ideas, but, so, I don't know, I just think that we ought to take this and really take a look at.
Second. I, I, I know Counselor Walsh has a question.
I'm sorry, I just have one question from a gentleman from Verizon. These are exclusively only to Verizon users that'll be able to use these cell, cell towers?
Just to clarify, this is Verizon Wireless, Verizon, but yes, these are specific for utilizing the Verizon Wireless licensed FCC frequencies. So it would be exclusively for Verizon Wireless customers.
So I, I mean, my guess is that as the technology catches on, all the providers are going to want to put them on the poles too, so this is going to be something, we're going to be challenged forward, so something just to think about.
Okay.
There was a motion to table, second, non-
Non-abiable, yeah. Counselor?
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net Absin, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. That's two public hearings. We have one public hearing to set down.
May I ask a question?
Now, the public hearing's closed.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Public hearing to be set down. Petition, a solution to auto body. Pablo De La Cruz for permission for an auto body shop at 606 Boston.
Second.
May I just ask before we set down?
Counselor Seer.
606?
606 Boston Street, right.
It's, it's right next to Mary Pot. It's right next to Mary Pot, okay.
Oh, yeah. The 606. This is set down.
Do you guys have any, 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 any?
Motion, second.
Motion, set it down. All in favor? I'm finished business. We have, the ordinance committee meeting at February 9th. An ordinance regulating procurement of electrical supply services in the city of Lynn to be adopted permanently.
Yes, the committee made a motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Calucci. Roca.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net Absin, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And also I'd like to make a motion for the remainder of the report to be tabled.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Barton has a motion.
Counselor Barton?
Yes, I want to take off the table the, the convo.
On the two petitions with viesta shows?
Thank you.
One Bikini Park and the other McManus Field, and if there's no objection, we can take them together.
Second by Counselor Cahill.
Clarification, is that a motion to approve?
To take off the table.
Take off the table.
Counselor Barton?
Motion to approve. For discussion. For discussion.
Yeah, he just took it off, he made a motion to take it off, to take it off the table.
No, he's giving a motion to approve.
Oh, not a motion. I made a motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net Absin, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Yeah, that was a call. On committee reports, ordinance, and rules, we have a motion to set down a public hearing for an ordinance amending his own ordinance relative to graffiti in the city of Lynn.
Motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net Absin, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Personnel committee.
Counselor Lapierre?
We approve two positions through the personnel committee this evening. Motion approved.
Second by Counselor Calucci.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net Absin, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means.
I have several orders. If there is no objection, would I have a motion to take it all away?
I'll make the motion.
Ways and Means. Order that the city controller take the following action. Transfer the sum of $9,324.53 from the insurance over 20K account to the Lynn Police Department Vehicles account. Transfer the sum of $3,000.01 from the back of payroll account to the settlement account. Certify as available fund the amount of $109,419.69 as awarded to the city of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the fiscal year 16 community state initiative grant. Certify as available fund the amount of $63,750.01 as awarded to the city of Lynn Health Department by the Department of Public Health for the fiscal year 16 strategic prevention framework. And order that the solicitors office draft and file a letter on the Capitol Lynn City Council to honor the Governor Charles Bay Secretary Transportation Staff and the General Manager of the Mass Bay Transportation Authority, Frank Pollard, in support of the continued operation of the Lynn commuter ferry.
Counselor Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, so the committee motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net Absin, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes, and we think that's our emergency.
Emergency. Second.
Counselor Barton?[1625.12]